Okay, if I can have your attention, we can get started. I'd like to call a meeting to order for the 4th of April 2019. I was gonna say 2010, I don't know why. Okay, and tonight, we have in place of the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Anthem, am I correct?
Yes, and I would like to take-
Come on down, you're the next contestant, and the price is right.
I think they're gonna sing right from there.
Oh, right from there?
Yeah. So, I just wanted to say quickly that we're very happy to have Amelia Earnshaw, Diana Gibson, Aaron Gillespie, and Sarah Monroe. They are a group called the Tri-M Music Honor Society. They are nationally recognized program through the National Association for Music Education, and currently, there are 2,100 chapters in all 50 states, which involve more than 84,000 students. This program is led by Choral Director, Music Instructor, Aaron Smith Davis. This year is the inaugural year of the Sandborn Tri-M Chapter. In order to be admitted into the Honor Society, students must excel in their regular academic courses, as well as their music ensembles, and exhibit leadership qualities. The purpose of the chapter is to provide an appropriate method for recognizing the musical achievements of the members, strengthen our school's music program, help the members reach their full musical potential, motivate and recognize the members' musical and personal achievements, credits, and grades, encourage the members to work together toward the same goal, inspire and challenge the members, and focus public attention on the school's music program through community service. So, thank you for being here. If everyone could stand.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose prostrates and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, the stars were spangled then, there again, there. For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Okay, motion on the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Who's that second, I'm sorry?
Larry.
Okay, Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Manifest is working its way around, there are five, by the way, I believe. I kinda put 'em crosswise, so they wouldn't miss them. Nominations.
There's a number of nominations for contracts for teachers, I just, I think we can, Phyllis, has it been past practice that they just approved the whole group?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't wanna read every name, you can just, if we could have a motion and a second to approve the list.
I move that we approve the list as presented.
Second.
Okay, do you wanna read names, or just-
No, no, it's a ton of names, hundreds.
Okay.
Yes.
Wow, oh, this is, this is renewal of the contracts?
Yes, the renewals, yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Discussion. Okay, just, so those are the renewal of the contract people, by April 15, I think?
Yes, they have to be-
Contracts have to be given to the staff, so that they know they're scheduled for next year, so that's what this is, this is not new hires.
Not new hires.
That's why we're so many of them. Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Resignations, we have none.
Oh, we have one resignation actually.
I have none on my list.
I know, one just came in.
Just came in.
I just wanted to let the board know that Stephen Bentley, science teacher at the high school, resigned today.
So, motion on to accept his resignation?
Move to approve with regret.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? That's unanimous. Superintendent's report.
Uh, I'm actually going to, my report is the presentation this evening, so I'm going to wait until the presentation further on the agenda.
Okay, and we have committee reports. Policy?
Policy met on March 27th. Larry Heath, President, and I were attended. I agreed to continue as the policy chair for the year, coming year. We reviewed revisions to over 30 policies from Sections D and E. Section D concerns district finances and fiscal operations, and E governs support services such as facilities, food services, and bus transportation. Most of the revisions discussed involve minor regulatory updates to legal references or wording. The revisions were recommended by the New Hampshire School Board Association's Legal Council, and have been reviewed by our administrative team. The 32 revised D and E policies were forwarded to board members in an email on March 28th, and they will appear on next week's board agenda on April 10th as action items, hopefully for first and second reading. Six are new policies, but do not appear to be controversial. Famous last words, right? Policy requests, our committee requests that the finance committee give special attention to the D policies, since they relate to fiscal operations, particularly DFA, that policy, and we also request that facilities members carefully review updated policy EC, since it concerns the facility committee's authority. If there are any questions about the policies, please contact Mr. Ambrose as soon as possible before April 10th. At our March 27th meeting, I also presented potential revisions to policies BDE and BDE- E, which govern board subcommittees. I noted, board members voiced some concerns at our March 20th organizational meeting when committee assignments were announced. The manner in which the assignments were made had changed in two ways. The board input was not sought, those historically members have been asked to submit committee preferences, and two committees traditionally populated with three members were reduced to two. Addressing the second concern first, during our meeting, our policy meeting, I noted that the reduction in all subcommittees to two by the chair had been described as need based because of excess work for the coming year, but fewer members per committee will help manage, and it was said that fewer committees members will help manage the load. So, I noted that the board's workload is not necessarily increased by continuing with three members. Two is a quorum, and if someone is absent, we can still continue our meetings. Second, fewer members presents challenges. Subcommittees normally elect a chairperson, and three allows a majority vote, and more importantly, subcommittees such as finance and facilities have authority to make key fiscal and planning decisions for the board. The two-thirds majority allows them to complete regular business, and EISA does have three members in our policy manual. The reason I'm going into some detail here is that it came up as a concern, and the subcommittee policies, BDE and BDE- E, will be reviewed at our meeting on Monday again and discussed, and I may move that we bring these to our next meeting on April 10th. So, I'm just explaining some of the background here. So, more importantly, EISA does have three members. The superintendent noted that the larger issue may be that we have too many subcommittees, and they are meeting too often. He advised, we consider eliminating some of the subcommittees. Personnel and public relations were mentioned. I said, we should keep most of our standing committees and populate them annually, but use them only as needed, and subcommittees do provide a check and balance, whether they meet regularly or infrequently. Addressing concern one, that board preferences were not sought prior to making committee assignments. I explained that the School Board Association's sample policy, BDE, which is what we will be discussing on Monday, states that appointments made by the school board shall then be approved by vote of a majority of the board. In other words, the committee allocations should perhaps be collaborative and inclusive. Mr. Heath argued at our meeting that the chairperson is presiding officer and should retain authority, and I indicated that those who run for school board do so based on specific interests and passions. A contractor on the school board may be best suited to facility subcommittee, but his reason for running might have been to increase teacher pay, negotiations, or to serve on facilities, or to improve math scores, EISA subcommittee. So, board members run for a variety of reasons, and were elected for those reasons. Their preferences should be given consideration, I said, and so we will be considering those two policies further at our next meeting, which is April 8th, 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. So, I usually keep my comments to a minimum, but in a renewed campaign to have greater influence over my fellow board members, I'm trying to articulate some of my arguments during our meetings, so hopefully that'll help clarify my positions moving forward.
Are we making a mountain out of a mo-hill? I mean, really? I know you guys are getting tired of my saying "in the past," well, I'm gonna say it again, in the past, it's been tradition that the board chair appoints the committees. And I'm not saying that you haven't, shouldn't have been saying to him, or assuming who might have been what you'd like, I understand that piece of it, but we have so much to deal with, I don't know why we're spending time on this. And I don't mean offense to you, Pam, I think you've done a great job on the policy committee, so please take that with kindness, not with any anger or animosity, because I don't see us needing to spend time. Assignments have been made, let's move forward, maybe next year, we might wanna look at it a little bit differently, and I would, you know, get more input from colleagues as to what they do like or not, but it makes sense to have the board try to, the chair try to organize the board in a way that's most effective, capitalizing on their specific talents and expertise in different areas, and maybe still may need to, may need to make adjustments too, I just, I don't know.
Maybe I can help with that a little bit.
I'm sorry, I, again-
No, 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 I actually, I totally agree with you.
I want Pam to understand, I'm not being critical of you as chair, 'cause I think you've done a fabulous job with policy. I couldn't, I wouldn't wanna go near it, because it would make me crazy, so I thank you for what you've done on that, but I don't-
While we're on, while we're on committee work, and we're on policy, and this has to do a little bit with policy, one thing I always try to do is listen to my constituents, and if you recall, I got information last meeting that I didn't know about concerning Jamie and his expertise, you know, well, it turns out Jamie also was a plant manager and a facilities manager, as I was. So, this week, I appointed him also to that committee after a discussion with him, because people from the facilities committee said, you know, given what's on the plate coming in the future, I have no problem with that, and he certainly has the expertise. So, just, you wanna put this in the minutes now or later, Phyllis, you know, I did talk to him, I didn't send out the email to you yet, because I, it was, what'd I do, Sunday, I think it was, Jamie, when we had that call?
I think so, yeah.
You were coming back from up north country, you know, because he's got special expertise, like Larry has special expertise, and Jim has that special expertise with negotiations, they went to those classes, you know. I hear what you're saying, if the committee feels there should be three, I've been thinking about this, I got your email, but I wanted, I would like to think about things first, where it meets at 11:30, I am SST and Wellness. SST is Monday night, once a month, Wellness is like twice a year, I'm retired, you all work, and where it meets during the day, that's gonna cause a hardship a little bit, I think, or I'm concerned it will, so I will be the third person on policy, no problem, all right, because it makes it easier for everybody else. I don't want people to have to, you know, how am I gonna get there? And I think 11:30 is good, because I hate going out at night, and I like policy anyway, so, right, so that'll, that'll hopefully solve the problem. I, I don't mean taking one that you, I understand, I agree with you, because that's why I put two people on each committee, you know, I mean, it's like, why do we need to agree? I especially wanted two on finance, except that Jamie is so qualified, because they can spend up to $10,000 without even notifying us, and I want it, if there was a conflict, to bring it to the board, you know, I think we should be aware of that, and that's specifically why I did that, but based on his expertise, I have no problem with changing that, you know, so I'll be there at the ace, and that's not a problem for me, you know, I'm off anyway, you know. Yes, sir?
We've been spending a lot of time reevaluating and redrafting policies based on the School Board Association's recommendations. Some of these policies haven't been reviewed since the 90s.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that the policies that Pam brought up, it sounds like the School Board Association has put thought into it, they have a policy, I think we deserve to look at that as an option, it's got the language in it, seems reasonable to me, so I think we should consider it.
As, in terms of the policies that you're talking about, as far as appointing committee
members go.
We can, that's not on the agenda tonight, so we-
I understand, but you're talking about policies.
But, well, only because there's an opening, wow, this is an opening.
Yeah, so I just wanted to put my two cents on that.
You wanna be very careful, you wanna be very careful changing those things, but we'll talk about those.
I'm not, I'm not speaking.
We'll put them on the agenda, we'll talk about them, you know. Okay, so ISA, excellence in student achievement.
Uh, we have a meeting next Wednesday at 4:30.
Gonna be the 10th?
Yep.
Okay, facilities.
Facilities met today, I'll do the report at the next school board meeting. The next meeting is Wednesday, May 1st, at 4:30, we're hoping, but that's, could be subject to change, we'll have to determine that in the next few days.
Now, that is another segue for me, I had a number of calls about, you know, how often do we have to meet? I don't micromanage committees. Your committee knows how much they have on their plate, you might have to meet once a week, but you might not have to meet for six weeks, you know, so you committee people will decide how much work you have to do and when you should meet, not up to me to assign to that stuff, all right, so, just to let you know.
I will say that I'm going to interject one thing, which is that I will develop again a schedule, we can talk about the frequency for the scheduled component, but if we're going to expect administrators, myself, and others to be at committee meetings, we need to have at least some kind of a schedule for the year, so that we can plan other things around that, and then if we need to add to that or subtract from it, no problem, right? Like, for example, policy met last week, it's meeting again Monday, that's fine, and we may meet a tremendous amount over the next five or six, eight weeks, and then not meet much for a long time, because the reality is, is that the gravity of the policy changes over the next six months will be huge, and then we'll be able to take a break for a little while, and then today, I got an email with 10 more policies from the School Board Association, that they want considered immediately based on grant money, so there's just, there's a push and pull, an emergency, and I just need to have a schedule, so that we can plan for people to be there, and then add or subtract, and I'll draft that and send that to you for review and approval, just like I did last year.
Finance.
Uh, finance hasn't met since the last school board meeting, the next meeting is Wednesday, April 17th, at 4:30.
Public relations?
I'll report.
Okay, SST?
Uh, nothing to report at this time.
Seminary? Good, this is good. Budget, well, obviously not.
We haven't met, we will be meeting on September 11th, I mean, April 11th. September, I like September.
Okay, and wellness, certainly not. What I'll start doing is, because you may be changing your schedule before the meetings, I'll go around each one of the gym, and say, have any report, there's no reason me to ask you for a report, when, no, I don't have anything to say, you know, so I'll start doing that. Yes, ma'am?
Personnel's planning to meet on May 22nd. Is this a meet and greet for the first meeting at 5:00 p.m.?
Okay. Guess who's up?
That'd be me.
That would be you.
All right. So, the freshman class is currently fundraising, the sophomore class, the Pizza Fest is on and being advertised. The juniors are prepping for prom on May 18th, I believe, and the seniors are prepping for the end of the year with graduation, senior trip. The student council discussed the plans for the rest of the year. The three events we have as of right now are Earth Day, Teacher Appreciation Week, and the plant sale. The plant sale may be replaced, but we're gonna decide as that comes closer to the end of the year. For Earth Day, we have a couple ideas. We're planning to give out like reusable straws, reusable bottles as raffle items, and we're gonna have a F L T trash pickup on Earth Day. On the Red Sox Home Opener, we're gonna do Dress for Success/Stand Up to Cancer for the Jimmy Fund. On Red Sox Home Opener, staff and students can pay $1 to $5 to wear Red Sox gear for the day. The proceeds will go to help support the Jimmy Fund, and this is actually gonna be on April 8th and 9th. I forgot that we had SATs and Senior Success Day on April 9th. And then today, we had our Southern New Hampshire Student Council's Spring Meeting at the newly renovated Salem High School. We toured Salem, ran a palace workshop, and elected the new district officers, and we also have some cool new ideas that we're gonna iron out and bring to the school.
So, I just have one question.
Yeah.
Do I get to make a pizza?
Of course, that's, that's a, I would say, I would say yes, that's definitely a sophomore class.
You let me know when and where, and I'll be there with pepperoni.
All right.
Excited.
And I'll be there with a camera.
All right.
You know, there is such a thing as a Greek pizza.
I can make, I can make a baklava.
Okay? Oh, baklava would be good.
Depends on when it is.
Okay, she makes the best baklava you've ever eaten. But anyway, public comment, now, I have to say, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna try to hold you to the three minutes, and we'll do it for 20 minutes, reason being, we have a long non-public, we have a number of interviews of potential administrators, so please keep your comments to the agenda, and I'll try not to shut you down, but if you can keep it as close to the three minutes, I'd appreciate it. So, now that I've said that, who wants to be up first? Did I scare you with that statement? I'm sorry.
I'll begin for the presentation.
Okay, after the presentation, we'll have a lot to say. Okay, Pam, I think you're up with the old business.
So, we have two policies for approval tonight. DDD, School District Credit Card Accounts Cards, and this is a new policy, here it is, and ignore the red print, please. And another one is, oops, EHB, Data Records Retention. So, these are fairly great forward policies, having to do with compliance with regulations. Can I have a motion for first and second reapproval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on the EHB, page 2, it's under A, this, Items 1 and 2. 2 is contingent on 1, but I don't see any language that ties them together, and just, are we to assume that 2 applies if 1 hasn't been implemented, or?
Under Special Education Records.
Yeah.
So, it says, upon a student's graduation from high school, his or her parents, guardians may request in writing that the district destroy the student's special education records, including any final individualized education program.
Yeah, and that's-
And-
Upon a student's graduation.
Right.
And then the next one says, at the student's 26th birthday. Requesting they may be retained, but if they've been destroyed, they can't be retained.
True.
Right, so it is, I'll answer the question.
Yeah.
The parent can request that they're destroyed before the 26th birthday.
Okay.
Otherwise, we have to keep them until they're 26.
And then they can ask for them to be extended till the 30th?
Exactly.
All right.
Yep, and those are all federal guidelines, they're not local law.
Thank you.
The age change from 25 to 26 in the old policy, is there any reason for that? I'm just curious.
It must reflect law.
Children, children are under, like, for example, they're under the medical insurance until 26, I mean, let's kinda keep it cohesive.
I believe, Jamie, I'm speaking, I'm not saying that I know for sure, but my instinct is, is that there's just been an adjustment based on what Pete just said. I could find out definitively, if you'd like me to, but-
No, that's fine, I was just curious.
But I certainly feel that this has changed. Sure.
Okay, so we have, did you have the motion already?
In a second.
You got it, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's on both of them, right there?
That's it.
Okay, that was on both of them, Phyllis, just to make sure you know. Middle school transition, and I will get out of the way, so people can see this.
We are running 20 minutes early, do you think-
Well, because she kept on going like this to me.
I think we have a full audience here.
Do you feel like, do you feel like we're okay, Ellie, to, you know, based on our conversation about start times? Remember earlier on, we, the board, we agreed that for big stuff, that we would set a time and hold that time, so parents would know to be here, and so, is everyone okay? I'm just doing a little-
I think going forward, if we are gonna have a presentation, and we say we're gonna inhabit at 7, then we should conduct all other board business and inhabit at 7-
Yep.
-to make it easier for parents to settle children, suppers, lunches, homework, and everything else that goes with it.
Yep.
And they come in for 7 o'clock.
We, we certainly could have rearranged this agenda, and I will, I will do that in the future.
I know, but going forward, since we have a good audience tonight, we shouldn't delay that, and get going.
Okay.
And then going forward, it's planned at 7.
I'd like to take a recess until 6:45.
Would you?
Yes.
Okay, so, Pam would like to recess until 6:45.
Just the whole meeting?
Yes, until the time certain of 6:45 arrives. Well, it says approximate.
They've never been, well, we'll take a motion on that. If you wanna make a motion, be, make a motion.
I move that we begin the middle school transition presentation at a time certain of 6:45.
Second.
The reason for that is, there may be people who are looking and saying, oh, they're starting at 6:45.
And we did change the time this recently.
Yeah, so I, you know, so they're gonna be here at 6:45, and they're gonna say, why'd you start early? You know, and that's fine.
And we did email everyone in their brothers and sisters, and friends, and aunts and uncles yesterday and today, to make sure that they knew it was 6:45.
I think it's fair that we start at the time.
Well, I didn't ask for some of the people that told me it was a problem to have a special time, so I'm gonna vote no on this.
Okay.
Because we've not answered unless we said it was a public forum.
Thank you.
Any other, any further discussion?
Let me just check something.
I appreciate the motion, but I think it's, it's not an exact time.
Well, that's what I was looking on here for.
I'd like to point out that we still have people arriving, though.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes, it's true, but we also, we can't wait for everyone to show up and sit down, that's not gonna work either.
No, no, no.
And the idea of, of having times on the agenda was to make sure we keep the agenda moving, so that we don't stay here till the next day.
No, you, I, I thought we usually-
I'll call for the question, Mr. Chairman.
I thought we usually had these are approximate times, but that's okay.
Peter, I'll call the question.
Pardon?
I'm calling the question, I ask, I'm asking for a vote on the issue.
So, you wanna move the motion?
The motion has been moved and seconded to have, to wait till 6:45.
Right.
And I'm calling the question to vote on that.
Okay. I was hoping to stall about 10 more minutes, because we got people coming in still. Yeah, obviously, we've got people still arriving, it's not, all right, anyway, all right, all in favor of recessing for 15 minutes? I have no problem, I, I-
There's still people coming in.
Yeah, no, I know, that's why I just said, opposed? Okay, all right, so why don't we take a couple minutes? Okay, we're out of recess at, eh, 3 minutes will go. You're up, sir.
All right, well, first, I just wanted to say that I think that we might be pretty close to technical library capacity, which I'm very thrilled about, but I want y'all to know where the exits are, there's an exit right there, and over there, and I don't, can they get out that way too?
Yeah.
That way?
Through the classroom.
Okay, I have no intention of doing a fire drill right now, but I do wanna make sure that y'all know where to go. Well, I can't, I really couldn't be happier to see all of you here this evening, thank you for coming out to hear about this very important topic. We have worked tirelessly since September, when the board asked the administrative team to present a proposal that would reflect the possibility of having our 7th and 8th grade students attend school at the high school facility, while having our 6th grade students attend school at the elementary schools, in order to help with our, really frankly, our situation where we have five campuses for 1,600 students. We're finding that as we've done a deep analysis of our finances, that's a very challenging thing to do. It's making our cost per pupil very high, and it's also keeping resources from helping students to learn. So, you'll see in this plan that we've tried to balance those two needs, while meeting the needs of our students in this amazing facility. I do wanna take a moment to recognize the people who worked on this plan, and I also I do want to take a moment to recognize the people who worked on this plan, and I also want to remind everyone that this plan is an overarching outline of what it would look like. There are a lot of estimates, and should the board choose to make a, a move of having students attend high, uh, middle school in the high school facility, there is further work to be done that would be extremely collaborative with staff. So, we, we are looking for staff input at that point. This is just an overarching vision of what it would look like to get the process started. Uh, before I do that, I would just like to acknowledge the people who have spent a lot of hours working on this. One is Steve Riley. Steve, could you raise your hand? Brian Stack, oh, thanks, thanks, please, Steve deserves a round of applause for sure. The second is Brian Stack. I'd like to take credit for these slides looking kind of cool sometimes, but it's really Brian Stack. So, I, yeah, thanks Kevin, I appreciate the applause, but really Brian's the one, he's the PowerPoint master of our, our administrative team. Uh, and then, uh, there were a number of folks at the elementary and middle school level, hold your applause, I'll just say them all at once, Sandy Rutherford, Ryan McCluskey, uh, Annie Rutherford, and, uh, and we had a lot of other input from folks like Jody Guttermann, the Director of Special Services, the Business Office, it's just been a real team effort to try to come up with a plan. Um, so could we give all of them a round of applause as well? Alright, so here it is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off with a, a, an essential question. What would it take for us to maintain the middle school that we have now? That's the first question that folks wanted answered, particularly some parents, and I think it's a fair question. So, Mr. Riley and I sat down and went through the capital improvement plan and tried to figure out what in the capital improvement plan is essential and what would the real cost be? Because capital improvement plans are typically, uh, looked at as an estimate, and we felt that the figures in our capital improvement plan were higher than they should be. So, we estimated that there would be window replacements, window dressing and treatments, the windows in that building are very old, um, in fact, they're the same windows that were put in the building when it was built in nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight. Um, classroom door hardware replacement, I'm not gonna read this whole list, but I'll say the big things are the main office renovation for security, um, the ceilings have a lot of work that need to be done, and, um, the total for that would be about nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So, if we were to keep the middle school configured the way it is, it would cost about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars of necessary immediate improvements that need to occur. There's also, uh, another six hundred and seventy thousand dollars roughly of, uh, facilities costs that would need to be done that are, uh, less urgent but very important. Um, so in other words, there's some real needs for worn-out casework, um, counters, upper and lower cabinets, flooring is a big issue, um, there's a lot of asbestos that isn't cracked, but if, so if it's not cracked, it doesn't have to be replaced, but at some point, it's gonna need to be remediated, that was a big cost, and, uh, the leach fields will need to be addressed eventually if we keep the facility open. So, we worked really, these costs came straight from the capital plan, the costs on this slide were actually, um, almost all of them were direct estimates from updated estimates, not the original capital plan. So, the total would be about a hundred and six, uh, I'm sorry, one million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, that's the cost if we were to keep the middle school open and do the renovations that were necessary. And I, I do want to thank Steve for going really deep and going out and getting estimates and really working hard to get this figure to be real without any real, without any, um, uh, what I like to call, uh, projection bloating. These are real figures, this is what it would cost folks to keep our middle school open. So, we, we had a long conversation about the parameters would be if we were to move the middle school to the high school facility. Um, the parameters were that we want to make sure that there are two separate schools operating within the same facility. They would have separate entrances, um, we, we worked hard in the first phase to figure out roughly how many classrooms the middle school would need and what that would do for the high school, and, uh, it was really clear right from the beginning that we would need to share spaces for music, art, lunch, library, phys ed, and we really worked hard to minimize to the extent possible the need for facility upgrades. We talked about everything. We talked about, uh, uh, a, a separate elevator, we talked about having students on the second floor, we talked about different configurations of the main office, all the issues that you're going to see, and I feel like the team has done a sincere and genuine job of whittling this down to a very realistic plausible plan. And then the last one was that after we started analyzing the number of classrooms and the, the needs of the two schools, it became very clear early on that the SAU seventeen office would not be able to stay at the high school facility if this move were to take place. So, here's the layout. This is the first floor of the high school. You can see the wing on the lower right is in yellow, that's the area that the middle school students would, uh, be utilizing, and I'm gonna talk about each of these areas in, uh, greater detail on the next few slides. So, if you can't see real well, don't worry, it's coming in bigger format in a second. Um, it is important to note that, uh, um, the, the, there would be there on a, a, a single off, entrance and office for the middle school, uh, right on the, the lower right-hand corner where that arrow line is on one twelve, and I'll show you in just a minute where that is. We would also be using the upstairs of the same wing for classrooms, and there would be a doorway between the high school and middle school in the hallway right there. The area in the circle in the upper left would have bathrooms, and the, the technical term I don't love, it's gang bathrooms, what it means is bathrooms with lots of stalls, so that the students would be in compliance, the bathrooms would be in compliance for the number of students. And, uh, in addition to that, the team felt that the middle school students would need their own locker room. So, the locker room would be in room one forty-two directly across from the small gym, which would be dedicated to the middle school, uh, during the school day. So, to summarize, we really wanted to focus on making sure that the middle school students had their own place to change, their own main office, their own multi-stall bathroom, and we had to add some water for science classrooms in the wing. This, this spot right here is where the main office would be. Now, that, that is not the entrance that the high school students use, it's the one to the right of the building directly below the SAU office, if you know where that is. So, it's a separate entrance in the building, so if you go back here, you can see the high school main office is where that oval is in the middle, and then go to the right, that's the entrance of the middle school, right where the yellow blocks start. Okay? And if that's not clear, I can show it to you later or talk to you about it. But that office, there was a lot of conversation about that office. It started out as almost a five hundred thousand dollar office. We whittled it down to a, a smaller space and, and a much more usable space, which was a great team effort. We got that down to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to renovate that office instead of significantly more, and I was, I have to say, we spent a lot of time figuring out the logistics of this. It would look like this. So, basically, you would walk into the building, um, uh, the parents would walk into the building, and there would be a window on the right-hand side with secretary stations, a reception room, a conference room, and a principal's office. Now, if you can't see these slides real well, I just want you to know they'll all be on the web right after this meeting, so you can go home and go through them one thing at a time, and that really is the best way for you to do this. We certainly recognize that there will be times when the middle and high school students may cross paths, so transition times during the school day will have to be carefully monitored. Band and chorus, library, art, PE, other special programming, um, students needing elevator access and lunch. So, we put into the budget for this process, uh, three paraprofessionals that would help to monitor students during transitions, and we would have to plan the student transitions, uh, uh, so that they were at times when the high school students are not, not transitioning as well. Um, there are other considerations which we would have to be aware of and plan for, which is after-school programming and busing. So, there are a number of estimated one-time costs at the high school, I'll go through a few of these and then give a summary. Certainly, I, I don't want to insult anyone, you can all read these slides. The bathrooms would be about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, the office, um, and the entrance vestibule would be about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, the classrooms would be about fourteen thousand, the locker room's about two hundred and ten, two hundred and eleven. Uh, we would have to pay to move the middle schools, about forty-two thousand dollars. Then there are a, a number of other items that are important, such as the intercom bell phone system, wiring for computer labs, signage, air conditioning, and corridor doors. The total one-time cost to move the seventh and eighth grade to the high school facility would be seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly. Now, I want to remind everyone, these are all estimates, but we worked hard to get, uh, we had contractors come in and actually give us the, their, the best estimate that they could. We didn't just call people and talk to them, we actually had them come walk the building, work with a project manager, and figure out the, a, a really solid estimate. Again, thank you, Mr. Riley, he worked very, very hard on that. Um, there would be estimated staffing reductions at the middle level, uh, as a result of the move, approximately ten positions across all areas of the school would be reduced, including teaching staff, support staff, custodians, and clerical support, and those savings would be roughly eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, the, the administrative team at the middle school looked hard at their budget and found a, a number of, uh, I included this slide not because of the monetary amount, but to show the level of detail that the administrators went to, to figure out exactly what they would need and not need to try to make a best estimate. So, there are maintenance services, enrichment, school administration dues, and replacement Athletics, this is another really hot topic item that some parents asked about, both in the survey and in my individual meetings with parents. There is a, a, a really interesting thing, the sixth grade students, if they are at the elementary school, would not be able to participate in middle school intrascholastic athletic opportunities because of the rules of the tri-county league, not because we wouldn't want them to. We would love them to do that, but the tri-county league will not allow them to. Um, we would have to, ha, transport students to the fields at the middle school and continue to use the fields, which means that we would also probably have to contract some, I don't have a better way to say it, but porta-potties for the fields down there for the times after school when kids are using the fields. Uh, um, uh, the schedule for the high school athletics would be slightly affected by the loss of the middle school gymnasium, and it is used daily in the winter from two-thirty to five-thirty for basketball practices, so we'd have to schedule carefully to accommodate that. We did an estimate of what, we, we thought, well, if the kids can't participate in middle school sports, they're gonna need intramurals, so we budgeted about ten thousand five hundred dollars for, uh, intramurals at the elementary schools to help offset the fact that they wouldn't be participating in middle school, uh, sports. So, having grade six at Memorial and, uh, Bakey School posed a few problems, and we, we thought long and hard about that. We decided that it would be best for the fifth and sixth grade students to assume a blended elementary and middle school model by switching classes in their core content areas. Fifth grade and sixth grade students are typically kind of ready to, to switch classes, and we didn't feel philosophically that we should hold them back by having them be in one classroom all day long. Uh, in staffing, uh, it is likely that some specialists will be on carts, we have not developed, uh, master schedules yet, that would be the work of the upcoming year to make decisions about what would happen with the master schedules. And, uh, facilities, we, we are certainly continue to be concerned about the, uh, the modulars that are at the, uh, Memorial School that need to be either replaced or, uh, build a, a permanent classroom addition. Band would be shifted some by the change, and additional lunches would limit the availability of the gym for health and physical education classes, and, uh, special education would become a little more condensed despite, uh, overall caseload in the building, and the relocation of the building entrance is still really important at Memorial, and I want everyone to know that, that that would be a, a priority moving forward. For those of you who don't know, the, there was a recommendation to move the entrance of Memorial School to the front of the building for safety purposes, and I, I'd really like to see that done, and that would be an important part of moving forward. So, here's the layout of what the, uh, Memorial Elementary School would look like with grade six, and, uh, there are two grade six classrooms, you can see the star in the upper left-hand side shows where they would be. Really, the layout of the building isn't much different than what it is now, it just simply added two classrooms. Certainly, you'll be able to see this a little bit better on the, uh, on your home computer when you can look at it more closely. For Bakey, it's similar, similar issues, except Bakey doesn't need to have the main office addressed. It, pretty much everything else, uh, was the same, and you can see that Bakey would add, the, the, the first floor of Bakey would stay very similar, and the second floor would have grades five and six on the left-hand side over on the, where it says second level on that chart. So, they would be in their own wing like a little school within a school. Special education needs, the, uh, one thing that came out during the study was that, um, we would need to hire one special education case manager because there would be a number of, uh, uh, special education students that would stay at the elementary school, and because of those special education regulations and laws, we're estimated that we would need to hire one, uh, one teacher at eighty-five thousand per year. So, the financial implications, you, the slide has blue for one-time items, but the, the overall summary of this, and you're certainly, the detail just takes everything that was in the previous slides and shows it to you in a, in a more condensed format, but in year one, we would save approximately seven thousand five hundred dollars if we moved the, the seventh and eighth grade students to the high school facility and, um, had the sixth grade continue to attend at the elementary schools. But that includes all of the one-time costs, which are significant, so in year two, the savings is seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. There are some items in here that, that I'm kind of wondering about, one was the partial middle school shutdown. Do we want to close the facility completely down, or do we want to heat it and maintain it and, and hope to find another organization to rent it? And the other thing is that I did estimate to reduce two bus runs, it may only be one bus run, but I felt like these were fair estimates for the purpose of consideration and planning. As we all know, the details are critical, and some of those details don't show up until you start planning a master schedule and making decisions. So, um, the total, uh, savings is on this slide, so savings year one, again, seven thousand five hundred, year two, about seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. There are future work considerations that need to be taken into account, um, there will be teachers on the cart, on carts at the high school, five to eight teachers, even with the SAU office leaving, um, will not have designated classrooms. Uh, the Memorial evacuation location is currently the middle school, so we'd need to figure out where they would go in an evacuation. The K eight, K through eight schools, Memorial, Bakey, and the middle school, would all have to develop master schedules for the new configuration over the next year, and the specials and lunch schedule at all three schools would need to be done within that. Um, library physical space would be, need to be reorganized at the high school to accommodate middle and high school students. Um, there is a storage need in the high school classrooms, um, uh, physical edu, education would need to have their storage reorganized, and we've been working with some folks to make plans for that. There is a press box behind the, the high school that would need to have a shed completed to, uh, provide cold storage for outdoor items, and again, as I said earlier, the middle school athletics will need transportation to fields, and then the big question is, what would we do with the middle school building once it's empty? It's really hard to solicit interest in a building that's not empty, so I can't say, there's no plan at this point. We have, you know, as always, word kind of gets around that there might be an empty building that could be used for a purpose, and we have been approached a little bit, but I don't have anything to share at this time. I do think it's important also to note that, that it's highly likely that this plan would include that the SAU office would move to an office space down in the Carriagertown Plaza. We have a gentleman in town who runs a very profitable business, who, who offered to give the district, uh, a very reasonable rate to, uh, house the tech department and the central office staff temporarily. Uh, I would say that that would probably be a four to five-year lease, because if the students continue to decline, the number of students, then we may need to move back into a school in four or five years, but right now, we're just right at the cusp of having the room for everyone if this change is made. So, there's a lot of conversations to have about that. I just wanted everyone to know that I really appreciate your patience with this presentation this evening, it's a lot of information, and so this is the schedule of a, like, I, I just want everyone to know, I'm not taking questions this evening. This is time for you to get the slides, read them, look over them, reflect on them. There will be a public forum on May fifteenth that will be facilitated by Todd DeMitchell the same way that it was done in the fall and September, for those of you who attended, and you'll be able to ask your questions and and you'll be able to ask your questions and cite, cite your concerns and, and give your feedback at that time. So before we have the next second public comment, I want everyone to know that tonight is not a question-and-answer session. And I also, I feel bad, but we, we do have a very important non-public, and we have to stop this meeting at 7:30 hard, okay? So if folks take longer than three minutes, or the public comment goes longer than 20 minutes, Chair Broderick will have to stop, because we have interviews scheduled for some important positions in non-public, and those people are going to be here for their interviews. So I really hope that all of you will take the time to very carefully read all of this information, prepare your questions, and I also want everyone here to know that at the next board meeting on the 10th, I've asked the chair to put on the agenda a conversation about the elementary schools and the passage of the Articles of Agreement for K-5. That is a very important school board meeting, and I just want you all to know that sincerely, probably since the inception of the district, the next four or five school board meetings are some of the most important we will ever have. So I hope that you will join us and be a part of this process, because we welcome your input and want to work collaboratively with everyone to figure out how to meet the needs of our students academically and how to, how to manage the resources that we have fiscally. It's not an easy challenge to, to face. So thank you all for being here this evening.[807.01][807.01][applause]
Okay, we've got a long way to go and a short time to get there. Smoking the bandit. Anyway, I realize this is a very passionate issue, but so that we can get as many people to speak as possible, I really would like to hold you to three minutes. I don't want to gabble you, but if I kind of go like that, that'll let you know you're getting there, you know? So, this is the public comment section for the second public comment. So if you would, like at the deliberative session, kind of line up behind this lady so I can know how many more people, and then you'll know how many people. So also, if you would identify yourself and your town, so fellows can write that down.
Hi, Kyle Susie from Kingston. I really appreciate the amount of time that you put into this. I can see a lot of work and thinking have been going into the physical relocation, and I was wondering, was there any consideration to, if this had to happen, it having different times for the starting and ending of school for middle school and high school?
Okay, you're not going to like this, what I'm going to say. Public comment is just that, is for you to give a public comment.
Okay, no, we can skip that if you want to.
No, because you won't be the only one to do. You have to be first, sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 that's totally fine.
In public comment, we don't usually respond, and as the superintendent said, on the 15th, we'll be able to respond.
Okay, that's fine.
But if, if that's a good question, and I'm going to suggest, Phyllis, could you write down those questions, and then we'll have, you know, we'll be able to get to those on the 15th.
Okay.
So we're not going to not answer your question, but...
That's totally fine, I understand. So, one thing that I do want to express here is that, you know, I know you were tasked with actually thinking about the physical ramifications and what the monetary cost is to this. I understand that was your task, but I haven't heard any plan for the non-monetary cost to the kids and the families. When you put 7th graders with 12th graders, I'm sure everybody in the room has that concern. And I know I would like to hear more about that. This, this is a very, very big deal, very big decision. So I know all the drama that I've had to deal with, with third grader, with a third grader and a kindergartner in the school, it's all been in the common areas. Whenever they're together with the older kids, with the bus especially, recess, gym time, whenever older kids are together with younger kids, problems happen. In this classroom, always great. So that is a real concern, and I just hope that that's also a concern of yours.
Nicole Ash from Kingston. And in regards to the plan, I just want to ask the school board to really make sure that you take your time and really do your due diligence before deciding on when and if to execute this plan. And I want to ask you three things to do. I want you to make sure that you really educate yourself with not only the benefits, but the challenges of this plan before you set a timeframe on when to execute this plan. Really investigate the needs of our students for yourself and know what the students' needs are, and find out what really happens in the elementary, in the middle, and in our high school before you commit to a date for this plan, because I have three children currently in the middle school who potentially could be affected by this, and like many people in this room, I always have opinions on how things could be better, and I ask the questions on why are we doing it this way, and, you know, why are we not doing this way? Trust me, I have opinions on everything, and because of that, I meet monthly with Mr. Rutherford, and we work on academic initiatives at the middle school, and I'm on the parents' board that meets monthly with, you know, Mr. Ambrose in regards to just the overall district needs. And knowing that the implications of this change that could happen, I recently took a leave of absence from my career, and for the last eight weeks, I've been substituting in schools. And I've done every grade. I've done the elementary school, I've done the middle school, I've done the high school, and I pretty much did that in order to do my due diligence, in order to investigate what our students' needs are and what this plan would do, and if it's right. And I want to challenge all of you guys and ask you guys, I'm not saying that I'm against this plan, but I am against you rushing the plan for a fiscal benefit. And I want you to ask yourselves, how many of you have been here and that you've been in a classroom recently, and you're making these impactful decisions, and do you really know what, what goes on? And I challenge you to make the decision on if you're going to do this, then to do your due diligence and to get into the classrooms and find out what our students' needs are and to educate yourself on the benefits and the challenges, because I can tell you, the answers you need are not by sitting around this table and talking about what you think you know, like I did. The answers are going to be in the classroom, because until you're in the classroom, you don't know.
Hi, Heather Anger Newton. Nicole pretty much nailed what I was going to say, but this plan has a really great job of addressing how we're going to fit all of the children in all the schools, but it doesn't really address how is it good for the kids, does it make sense for the kids? And I truly hope the board takes into consideration what the parents want, what the community wants, before they implement this plan.
Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. I was wondering if the board or the administration had looked at any other schools in New Hampshire that have this model and see how things are working, not only capacity-wise, but for the education of the students. Another thing was, I just noticed on the website, there were two more new options that were presented by NSDEC. I don't know if that's something I hadn't seen before. I just noticed it on the front page of the website. That's not new news. That's old news. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm JJ DiPio, and as some, and I'm in the middle school, and as some of the previous speakers have said, the non-monetary cost, maybe we need to make sure that we take that into account, because there are many flaws that many people can, could be able to find, or they might not, and we need to be able to look out for those. And I think that it might be useful to talk to students, talk to the school's respective student councils, and see their ideas and what they think of this before anyone makes
Some guy, Corey Mason from Newton. First comment is, policy DGD, school district credit card accounts and cards? I can't find that policy online. Not sure why. If you could just deprive me of that, that'd be good. My second comment relative to the challenges here this evening are, I'd like to challenge the school board to establish the goals, document them. Establish goals, document them, and share them with the community about redistricting. I'd also like to challenge the school board to establish communication plan and timeline about redistricting. And again, of course, effectively communicate that back to the community as well. I'd like to challenge the school board to establish what pillar this sits within underneath the long-term strategic plan, if there is one to be created. I'd like to go ahead and challenge the school board to also take a deep look into, again, everything that we've heard with the prior commenters about, what, what does this impact student achievement? How does this impact student achievement? To what benefit will a transition serve? And then also, a cultural impact on staff and also student? When I read the line item about five to eight, staff will be on carts, how many teachers here worked on carts last time when we had to do this emergency transition? And that was not a good thing. I know a couple people who weren't overly pleased about that, so I just wonder if that's kind of impact long-term recruiting new staff? And then last but not least, if we can see school districts like Windham go from less than 1,600 students five years ago, or just, just in a similar timeframe that this high school opened, to over 3,100 students, why are we not talking about increasing our enrollment then decreasing our enrollment?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is that it? Oh, there we go. It's always one.
Kelly Cullavan from Newton. I just wanted to give a statement, because it won't be a question, because I know it won't be answered. Why are we only looking at overrunning our elementary schools and putting 6th back at Bakey and Memorial? Why is that the only option that we're being presented with? Why are we not looking at the pros and cons of the idea of pre-K2 being at Memorial, 3 through 6 being at Bakey? I know some parents are okay with it, some parents are not okay with it, but if we're going to be overrunning both the elementary schools and being at max capacity at both of them by putting 6th grade and some of our kids in modulators and whatnot, why are we not looking at making the most of our facilities and having our kids together from day one? Thank you.
That's the last public comment. I'd like to address that, because that's important.
Any other public comments? After I said, "We're not going to respond," the superintendent just asked if he could respond to the last answer.
Well, the thing is, so I just want everyone to know that all of your questions that you've just asked are absolutely exactly the questions that you should bring to the forum on the 15th. That's the purpose of the, the May 15th forum, is to do, to ask what Kelly just asked, to ask what Corey asked, and all the people before them. Those are great questions, and they're questions that have been considered, and they're questions that have been discussed. We are very concerned about culture, we're very concerned about student learning, we are very aware of all of these things, and I would be more than happy to explain them at the May 15th meeting, but the, the last point that I made at, at the end of my presentation may have kind of slipped by in the fact, there is a lot of information in these slides, so I want to say it again. The board is going to be discussing at the April 10th school board meeting, the implications of the passage of the alteration to the Articles of Agreement, which means, in plain speak, we're talking about whether or not we're going to keep the current configuration of elementary schools. So Kelly, the answer to your question is, April 10th will be the purpose of that, and I want to be clear with everyone that based on the survey that we did after the public forum in the fall, the feedback was pretty unanimous that if we were going to change our elementary schools, that the conversation should center around making Bakey a pre-K3 school and Memorial 4, 5, 6, for the very reasons that, that Kelly Cullavan just outlined, right? If we're going to, if we're going to make a change, should we do it all at once? So as I stated at the last school board meeting, my first response to having the Articles of Agreement passed was somewhat of a state of shock. So it took a few weeks to kind of think about how to approach everyone about this, and I finally decided that, you know, what works best for our community so far is utter transparency. We're just going to talk about it, and then we're going to give you a chance to respond on May 15th. So please, all of you, come back next week. Thank you.
School board members, can you think of anything on the, for the agenda next, it's going to be next Wednesday, which is probably going to be a very big meeting? And to that effect, because Superintendent and I tomorrow will be setting up the agenda, can I just ask you folks, because it's going to be well-attended. We started at 7:30. He and I set the agenda.
Six thirty.
I'm sorry, 6:30.
We started at six.
At six.
Yeah, don't mind me, folks, but I'm trying to, trying to get what I want to say out, and I'm not thinking too well. Was that a good start, Ty? Because I know a lot of you people have to get here from work. Would six, just to show of hands, how many would prefer to start, let's say, you know, 6:30? Okay, seven? Oh, boy, Ty.
6:45?
Just do 6:45 again, that was fine.
Okay, well, I, I, I want to make sure we maximize the people, because people are still coming in, and the other ones are going to come. It's an important meeting. How about six?
No, six is out.
Okay, that's fine, I got no problem with that. Okay, so why don't we say approximately 6:45? So we don't have to have that lumber we waited. So the sooner you can get here, the better for us, because we ended up waiting about 20 minutes, because we had a post-it time, right? Once you have a post-it time, you've got to stick to that. I believe that's actually a rule. Okay, anyway.
So I just wanted to say that, that we will start the school board meeting with the committee updates and all the other things that need to occur, but the conversation about this issue, which is really the layout of our K-8 district, will be at 6:45. And I also will ask Phyllis to book the auditorium, so you can all sit down comfortably.
Everybody, I hope, is comfortable with that. All right.
I already did it, I'm the boss.
I'm the boss tonight? You're the boss of the school. Okay, we get along well. Okay, the next Sambor Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, from 6 to, wait a minute now, I was a teacher here. Boys and girls? 6:45, yeah, next Wednesday, the 10th, 2019, from 6 to 9 PM in, in the auditorium of the regional high schools. So we're going to take a couple minutes, if everybody want to leave, we're going to have a non-public, oh, we got Sandy back there. What do you got, Sandy?
The play is, the rehearsal for the play is already starting. They're here from 5 to 7.
Like I say, it's going to be the Sambor Regional Library, High School Library.
All right, so it'll be in the library, I'm sorry.
I just found out about tonight. Okay, can we clear out very quietly and nicely, if you would?